Really appreciate how informed he keeps me, so I feel quite confident in the presentation today. Jim, I know you have a lot to share, and there are several presentations that we're going to be looking at. So I look forward to your updates, and Madam Superintendent, I'm going to hand it over to you.
Okay, thank you. I could say ditto to everything that you said. We absolutely have a wonderful Chief Financial Officer. Tonight, I believe that, you know, some of the goals are to continue with the transparency that we've always exemplified, keeping this board updated and engaged. And, you know, we really just want to reassure you that, you know, the work that we're doing with the finances is being done very delicately, strategically, and courageously. We are keeping the main things the main things. So with that, I will turn things over to Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Barnes.
Thank you, Superintendent, and thank you, Cindy. So I'll be presenting on three topics tonight. Before we start, I just want to stress, in my weekly meetings with the Superintendent, we spend hours discussing the financial and operational challenges facing our district, both in the current year with an $83 million projected deficit and an upcoming tough budget year. So we're not viewing anything with rose-colored glasses, so to speak. However, the presentations tonight are all positive in nature in that we're operating within our budget, and two big projects that have long been discussed are moving forward. So just thought I'd say that. Edmer, next slide, please. So the first presentation is on the first quarter financial results. I'll be talking about the financial results, and then a financial update on the commissary, and a financial update on our capital budget and financing. All of the district's financial planning is constructed within the full context of our general fund operating results and the projected cash flows for all our funds, general fund, grants, food service, and capital projects. So before updating the commissary and the capital budget, it's critical to understand the current year's results and the projection for the remainder of the year. If we encounter any unexpected financial problems within the general fund, it could impact the commissary, capital projects, or any other distinction, because both of those projects and everything else does rely to some extent on general fund cash for the funding. So this presentation on the first quarter results and projection will only focus upon a few key areas that were included in the full report, which was distributed to the board about a month ago, and it was included in last month's board meeting. Edmer, next slide. So I'm going to start with the executive summary. I just pulled it right out of the first quarter report. It provides an overview of the budget process, the context for our results to date versus budget, and it takes a peek ahead at upcoming financial issues that we're seeing that'll play out in the last three quarters. I think a good place to start is really to reflect upon all the work that we did to put this current year's budget together. Two factors had a dramatic impact on the current year's budget: the loss of $90 million in our BESR and the need to align total staff counts and costs through our declining enrollments. The Superintendent constructed a two-year plan that mindfully addressed these issues while also ensuring that all student needs are met, avoiding disruptions to the investments that we've made in security, health and welfare, athletics, and that utilizes $83.5 million of our fund balance during this transitional year. Keep in mind, because we're going to be dealing with it in the upcoming budget year, but also what we had to deal with in the 2425 budget, were the implications or the consequences of the decisions of the Superintendent's very unique two-year plan to address that financial cliff. During the first year of the two-year plan, we cut 226 mostly vacant positions from the total district budget but increased the general fund FTEs by 158. The net impact on the general fund will be large increases in salary and benefit expenditures and a relatively small amount of what we've come to call vacancy savings, because we cut the vacancies from the budget, and that was a really courageous, necessary, and long overdue first step. This year's results are also impacted by the third year of the BTF contract and contractual increases for all the other bargaining units. On the revenue side, last year, 23, was the last year of the full phase into the foundation aid formula. So incorporated in this year's budget was a much more modest and historically consistent foundation aid increase. Also, what was communicated down the budget and incorporated into the board-approved four-year plan was the construction of a new commissary and the lease of the same facility, and a well-organized, well-put-together capital budget plan for $64 million, $10 million in cash and $54 million into a bond offering. The debt payments will be largely offset by corresponding building aid over a 15-year period. At the end of the first quarter, we're still projecting that $83.5 million deficit. It's too early in the fiscal year after the original budget to really update that, but we will be getting an updated projection for the remainder of the year at the end of the second quarter. Why it's a little too early? You're not paying full salaries to the teachers until like the middle of September, so the first couple, two and a half months aren't representative of the full year run rate. Plus, you're just getting back to school. The principals are submitting additional requests for things. All of that will be fully reflected in the second quarter report. On the next pages, I'm going to have you take a look at the FTE charts based upon the data available, September 30. These three charts visually explain the large net changes in total FTEs and the allocation between the general and the grant funds. Those three charts really show the main impact of the first year of the Superintendent's two-year plan. There will be increases in spend-related FTEs and other costs during the second quarter due to increases in spending enrollments and/or IEP services, and we'll be incorporating those into the second quarter projection. And as noted above, the 2425 year, which we're currently in, is going to be one of the most eventful in many, many years. It includes the Superintendent's first year of a two-year phase-in, which, by the way, reduced the total FTE count and produced maybe five layoffs, tops. And we'll also be making the largest investments in facilities in 30 years. So with that background, Edmer, could you turn to the next slide? Here's the, this first one shows the total FTE count on both a budget and employment in all funds. You see the big drop? That's the 226 vacancies that the Superintendent and her staff and this board courageously cut from the budget. They finally bent the curve and almost zero layoffs. It's a big start to addressing the staff-to-student imbalance. Edmer, next slide. Now, here's the same data, but just for the general fund. You see that went up? 158 positions were added to the general fund budget. This was the Superintendent's mindful approach. She didn't do 300 layoffs. We moved quite a few positions from the RBSR F Fund into the general fund to avoid layoffs and keep in place all the supports and programs that the students needed: security, guidance council, social workers, tradesmen, school-based people. So that's the impact on the general fund. This is why you're going to see increased salaries and benefits and lower vacancies, lower vacancy savings. Edmer, next slide. Okay, here's the same data for budget and employment, but in the grant funds. You see that thing just drops off the table? That's the end of our BESR. We had to deal with the loss of funding for 400 positions that we had in our BESR. We moved about 152 to the general fund, and we've been able to cut in vacancies for the balance. Edmer, next slide. Now, back to the reporting. Here's our enrollment data as of October 31. We break it down into various categories. The two most general, and let's say most important, are the beds K through 12 and the beds pre-K, the first two. I'm just going to announce the number, and I'll let the Superintendent maybe add some comments here. This chart, if you go to 2425, beds K through 12, shows an increase of between 3 and 400 students. That is, look at the trend data here. That's the first time that's happened in 10 years. Now, we'll gather final data in January, just to be cautious, but unequivocally, our enrollments are up this year. Super, would you like to make a comment?
You know, I just want to say that that is really exciting. You know, I am thrilled, over the moon happy about it. You know, I wish I could take credit, but I can't. It really is a lot of the work of the board. It's the work that our principals, our assistant principals, our teachers, our staff, our athletics, that everybody is doing. I believe that the community is beginning to trust the Buffalo Public Schools, the work that we're doing, and that we are bringing some pride back into the work that we're doing. So this is really something for everybody to pat themselves on the back and feel good if we needed evidence that what we're doing is beginning to take storm. This is it. Good work for everybody.
Thank you, Super. Edmer, next slide, please. So the next critical part of that first quarter report previously distributed was our cash flows. The single most important financial report that encompasses every fund and every dollar, in and out. If you go to the column called "The Original Projection", five, over, and you go down to the end, the ending cash, our beginning cash was $444 million. We're projecting an $83 million deficit. That's real cash. So ending passion investments was supposed to be $353 million. But through the first quarter, we're running about $55 million ahead of that cash plan. If we continued at this pace, we would end the year at $408 million. The first quarter does not guarantee the next nine-month results, but again, I'm just reporting right now, and it's good news. Things are running according or a little above budget. Edmer, next slide. Quick summary. Through September, I pulled all the data I showed you tonight from the quarterly report, but we've already analyzed and processed the October results. We're tracking right on the 2425 budget in terms of operating results, revenues, expenditures, and cash flows. The quarter 225 report will provide a more specific and reliable projection for the remainder of the year. And during the second quarter, we also hope to report on significant additional progress on the next two topics: the commissary and the 2025 capital budget and financing. So that's the context of where we are. I'm going to report on, I'll give you a commissary update next. Edmer, if you could pull that out. Okay, Edmer, next slide, please. Thank you. Again, the big picture. This one goes to both the commissary and my next presentation, our capital projects. All this data and projections are included in the board-approved four-year plan. We've reported on both these projects numerous times: the BFSA, the mayor's office, our external officers. And in projects this big and at times so emotional, the Superintendent and I just wanted to continue to present factual updates. That's all it is. So number one on the commissary, all designs and construction documents have been submitted to the state. The state requires the submission of a lease prior to giving final and full project approval. We're confident we're going to get the lease done, and soon after that, the state stamps everything approved. We're currently in lease negotiations with McGuire on a new 15-year lease. We're going to be leasing this facility. The current estimated cost of the project? $43,164 million. Last time we reported, it was $44 million. A couple of key lines, and I know this might be hard to read. The first line are basically the construction costs. This is from the McGuire's construction budget from 1018. This amount is to be paid by McGuire. I want to be clear about that. $30,890. We already paid the architectural and design fees for $1.9 million. There's going to be some BPS direct cost, as reported like six prior times, for furniture fixtures and equipment for $5.3 million. Because the Superintendent and I are loathe to surprises and always want to be on a conservative side, we put in $5 million in unknown costs, bringing the total project cost to $43 million. Keep in mind, McGuire pays the $30,890,000. So bidding and updated construction cost will be finalized as the lease is signed. We may engage with a construction management firm to update the construction cost estimates in the upcoming weeks if we haven't finalized the lease by then. Now, this is, next one's important. There are currently two alternatives for funding for this project. Utilize the excess C-Fund revenues, reserves. That was the original plan, communicated to the state, and it's still a very viable plan. And B, fund the new lease through the general fund based upon receiving a positive response from the state regarding our request for lease aid. This request is currently being processed by the building aid unit, not food service, and the state's attorneys. We cannot project cash flows for this alternative at the present time. We're waiting on an answer. Edmer, next slide. So what we can do is give you an updated projection using that first alternative, the C-Fund, use of excess fund reserves. This is based upon our current lease negotiations and the impact on the general fund. So per updated cash flow analysis and the status of our current lease negotiations, we're projecting this project may require approximately $10 to $15 million in general fund cash over the next 15 years, and all weighted toward the end of the lease. This is consistent with previous models, calculations, and presentations. Myself and the Super have been communicating this from day one. This project, I mean, how it's financed, will not be all funded through the C-Fund. It will require some help from the general fund. So there's nothing new or shocking here, and the amount being reported here is the same. What this basically shows are the projected deficits and the beginning food serve balance of $39 million. It goes down each year by the amount of the deficits. So the reserve would be used up in, say, year 10, and you'd have about, no, year 12, you'd have about three years where the general fund would be required to fund those deficits. Just an honest, realistic financial analysis of this project under almost any condition. Edmer, next slide. So summary remarks. The cash flows I presented today for the C-Fund alternative, it shows this is an economically viable project. It projects an estimated use of $10 to $15 million of general fund cash over 15 years, all weighted in years 12, 13, 14, and 15, and this is consistent with previous models, calculations, and presentations. We do not have enough information or data or feedback from the state to project the cash flows for the general fund lease aid alternative. So that's just a factual update on the commissary. Edmer, next slide, please. Oh, next slide. Next presentation, please. Okay, this next one is a report on the capital budget and the financing. There's been some misinformation about this whole project and the financing. The information I have in here is presented to you previously, and it's pretty much the same. The Super and I felt it really important to present it again. These are the facts. Edmer, oh, thank you. I forgot the big picture. So here's the plan. Plan described below was included in the board-approved four-year plan. It's also been reviewed and approved, in quotes, by the control board on external orders. There's 27 projects totaling $64 million in cost. The Buff State Da Vinci project is $34 million, and there are 26 much smaller health and self-safety-related windows, light abatement, roofs, lighting, that total about $30 million. This plan will be financed through a $54 million bond sale and $10 million in district cash. The bond proceeds are used, they're taken in, they're used to pay the vendors, and then the debt payments are offset almost dollar-for-dollar by building aid. It has a zero financial impact on the district and the city of Buffalo. This is a New York State preferred method of financing large capital projects. The plan has received a favorable response from the Citizens Planning Committee chaired by Skyline Banks. The CPC noted that historically, BPS requests are considered and approved outside of the controller's debt cap. They have never been considered part of the controller's debt cap. And that the BPS-related debt has no impact on the city's finances, and they're 97.3% aidable. So that aid we received offsets the debt payments for a zero financial impact. The mayor's recommendations to the common council also included that plan request. Without getting it into weeds, but because misinformation has been spread, I want to stress this again. We went through the full Citizens Planning Committee, Skyline Banks and all their board members. They even wrote a letter to the controller stating, "These projects have always been excluded from your cap. They're much needed by the children of Buffalo." The controller did not respond to that request. Next, we met with the mayor's office and certain common council members, and we explained the facts of this type of financing. This isn't some unique creative financial tool that came from me or anyone in my office. We went by the New York State playbook. This is how you're supposed to do it. So the mayor is all on board. The common council is all on board. We presented them to them. But getting over the final hurdle of this cap will probably take a couple of more meetings. Edmer, next slide. So financial impact of the plan, debt and state aid. I'm going to explain it one more time. The city sells a $54 million bond for the aidable amount of our projects. We take that money, we put it into the H Fund. The project's actually called H281. That money is strictly used to pay the vendors, the construction costs. Then you have to repay the debt. All projects included on our master list are aidable up to 97.3%. Because Buff State was a complete renovation, they calculated the building aid in a different formula, which is called the maximum cost allowance. So they gave us 70% of those total costs. The district uses $10 million of cash to partially fund the Buff State project. Again, the annual debt payments will be offset by annual state building aid. The net financial and cash flow impact to the BPS will be almost zero, and it is guaranteed to be zero to the city of Buffalo. The beauty of this project, again, it's just pulled from New York State's playbook. It can be repeated year over year. Edmer, next slide, please. So you're going to kill me for being redundant, but I'm going to show you actual projections pulled from debt tables and state aid tables. Below are the annual debt payments on the left based upon a $54 million 15-year bond at 3.6% interest. This is the bond that we will issue to pay for the capital projects. If you take a look at those first four columns, see the P plus I column? That's the principal and interest we'll pay annually on the bond: $4,724,519. Building aid is projected at 97.3% for 15 years from the date of our final cost submissions. You see on the right, see that first column? It's got zero in it for building aid. You always miss one year because you're finishing up the projects, and then you're submitting your final cost reports. So there's always a one-year lag. So the net amount is $4.7 million. We've got to pay the debt, but we don't get building aid. Now look at every other year. The debt payments minus the estimated building aid, they will actually be getting more in building aid than we're paying out in debt. That's because we paid $10 million in cash. And regarding that first year where we didn't get building aid, look at the bottom line. There's no debt payment, but we still get the building aid. It's zero cost to the district. Edmer, next slide, please. So our next steps. This is important, but again, previously communicated to everybody in Weston, New York, controller's office, common council, mayor. The plant team is working with the architect and engineering firms to submit the design and construction documents to the state by January 1. It's in progress. The state is aware of this and informed us of an eight-week review- The state is aware of this and informed us of an eight-week review and approval process. So our implementation plan calls for receiving all project approvals and the building aid calculations by March first of 2025. This will allow enough time to include these projects in a fifty-four million dollar bond issue on or around April. We are monitoring the progress of each project and the overall plan on a weekly basis. We know right now, and we've still got a month left, Buff State Da Vinci looks like a slam dunk that will get it to the state by January first. Joe DePerma, who I'm going to mention a little bit later, he's probably got two or three that are ready to be submitted. Brad McGalvin, who I'll mention later, he's got ten lighting projects. He's pretty confident that most of them will get submitted. So we're doing really well. But these are the goals we've been communicating and been tracking toward. Edmire, next slide. I'm going to end the summary remarks by mentioning some of the guys who toiled on the fourth floor that are doing all, that put together the plan, that are pushing the A and E firms and providing all kinds of expertise. So the plant project management team for these twenty-seven projects consists of Kelly Elhadad, Brad McGalvin, Joe DePerma, Jim DeForre, and Derek Nelson. They've done an exceptional job selecting and managing a list of projects, twenty-seven, that address the most urgent needs of our building, that are stay-datable, that can be completed in a relatively short timeframe to avoid that debt-building aid delay and that will make substantial health and safety improvements for the students. They've done a great job managing through very tight timelines while dealing with the typical issues surrounding capital budgets. This team's efforts have been supported and enhanced by working closely with Jennifer Lotempio and finance to expedite the processing while ensuring all procedures are followed and proper budgets and funding are secure. It's the first time in a long time that finance, purchasing, and plant have worked this closely together. And David Hills and Mel, they deserve a round of applause for persistently leading both the commissary and the capital budget project through years of ups and downs and twists and turns. I went down and got involved with the capital project, I don't know, maybe a year ago. The stories I've heard and the meetings I've attended, these guys have done an amazing job persistently staying the course when everybody wants to go this way, that way, dance this. Those two guys have done a great job on the commissary and the capital budget. So we haven't crossed the finish line yet for the commissary or the capital budgets, but guys, we are really, really very close. And as the super mentioned at the start, we know we're in tough financial times, we've got a tough budget here, but good things are happening. And the board should, is part of all this and has done a great job supporting all of this stuff. So just for a minute, I think we could all say pat each other on the back and say, "Good job." That's it.
Vice President Scott, I understand you'll be starting the Q and A with the board. Chairperson McKenna has had to log off because of her time at the airport, so thank you, Mr. Scott.
Thank you Chief Barnes for the very thorough presentation on a variety of important financial issues. Let's start with Board Member Woods. Any questions or comments, Board Member Woods?
As you said, it's a very thorough presentation. I appreciate that we're moving forward on these projects and I appreciate the superintendent and Mr. Barnes's including all possibilities. And also, it was very necessary that you pointed out three times that the capital project is not going to cost the city of Buffalo a dime, so they have no reason not to move forward and cooperate with it. Very thorough presentation, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wood.
Well said, Board Member Woods. Board Member Shuda, any questions?
No, I would just echo what Paulette has stated and again, compliment the superintendent and Chief Barnes for giving the thorough background of what's happening.
Thank you, Board Member Shuda. Board Member Hurd, any questions?
Yes, first I'd like to just commend the superintendent on such a fine job along with Jim Barnes for really, really taking close personal detail about our staffing, making sure that we able to minimize our cuts and really, really work on our general budget, you know, that we do have the savings and also, you know, playing close aid to the needs of the district. So that's the first thing. Do have just a couple of quick questions. I know we mentioned our capital projects, several of our capital projects, but where are we at with our other capital projects, seeing that we're going to have a saving for the first time in ten years? And there's a number, I'm going to have to run them off, but you know, there's a number of other capital projects that we're looking into and see how those are going within this
The focus of this update is on the brand-new twenty-seven item well-designed capital project list. I'm aware that there are other projects older that have been started and in process. I'll get you an update on that. And I'm also aware that we're not included on this list, but two things that seem to be of big interest to you, all high-end Riverside work is going on. I'll get updates for you.
Okay, and also, you know, I would love to see, I'm going to repeat this one more time, about the food commissary, about having a restaurant there for the community, maybe a breakfast lunch spot and using our students as training programs for them. And I would still love to see that being active somehow and see some drawing plans with that, since we have a five million dollars that's set aside by the district for unknown folks.
I shouldn't. Okay, I hear you, Mr. [inaudible].
Okay, thank you so much, yeah.
All right, Board Member McCosey, any questions?
No questions, that was, I guess thorough is a popular word of the day, but I just want to give you some props, Jim, because your candor and how you just make this whole presentation so digestible for everybody, not just us board members, anybody watching, hitting all the points that need to be hit, making sure people know that, yeah, there might be some rhetoric going on, but here's the real deal, and that you're accessible to people who have any further questions. So I just, you know, I hear you giving everybody else props, but I just want to hand some to you and to the, you know, of course, the superintendent and everybody else, but you're the one making the presentations. It's not, you know, numbers are not necessarily my thing, but you make it so easy for me to be able to ask questions and your presentation was so thorough that I really didn't have any, so kudos to you and I look forward to your updates.
Thank you.
All right, Vice President Kathy Evans-Brown, any questions?
Well, I just ditto everything my colleagues have noted and Jen took the words out of my mouth, Jim, you make everything seem so clear, you know, even though I have a math background, you just make it clearer than what I could ever do. So thank you for that, kudos to you and the superintendent.
Thank you, and it is me, the superintendent. There were a couple of revisions she made before I presented this tonight. She had me take some things out and reword some things and comes out like this. Thank you.
And President Belen-Cotman, any questions?
No, thank you for your presentation, appreciate it. I would like to know what's going on with Middle Early College, since you are there and the superintendent is here, particularly since Middle Early College was the school that was earmarked to go to Buff State. I want to know what the plans are for Middle Early College. And so I would expect in the future to hear very soon about that. I'm getting a lot of feedback from Middle Early College about this, so I'd like to make sure that that is addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott.
All right, Chief Barnes, only question I think I have is, we know that the city is in a tough place financially and in the past they have borrowed our money to fill holes. Any update on that and, you know, how frequently that's happening, how much money's being borrowed? Do you have any recent knowledge on that?
Yeah, based on a knowledge of their budget and our budget and the cash flows that flow out of there and a frequent conversation with the Controller's Office and the city, they'll probably have to dip in three times again this year. That's the best answer as I could get you, three to maybe four times this year.
Okay. And I assume no progress on getting more interests paid back to the district that we pursued last year at some point?
No progress, but we'll give you an update at next meeting.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Chief Barnes, Superintendent Williams-Night, any closing comments before we transition to our next committee?
I just want to say that Jim Barnes is a very humble, humble leader. He, you know, and David Hills have really done a lot of work with respect to this capital project piece. And I know that, you know, usually the finance meetings deal with numbers and dollars, but I'm always thinking about faces of our children and the opportunities because, you know, the budget that he works so delicately with is really what drives how many teachers we have in schools, how many assistant principals we can have, do we still have security officers? I mean, and so, you know, it really is a very, very tough job that he has. And, you know, I don't know, just as an aside, if you've had a chance to ride by Bennett, but the stairs, the stairs look amazing. And that was done in a real short period of time because for years, those stairs didn't look like anything any of us would be proud of. And so, you know, in a very short period of time, it took a lot of work though, it took a lot of work behind the scenes. And that's why I'm glad he took the time to name people, to show, you know, gratitude to them and grace to them, because we don't see the faces all of the time of the people behind the scenes, the wind beneath the wings on how those steps, you know, got handled, how we were able to move the children out of Duville and over to School Eight. So I do appreciate when you take the time to do that. So great presentation, we're going to keep keeping the main thing, the main things. So and we'll share an update on Middle Early, that's the one thing, that's the one thing that, you know, we're still, we're still trying to get that to, you know, when I sat in this seat, we had three schools, we had three schools in one school, now we got two. I mean, and so, you know, there were some things that happened prior to me being here whereby buildings were sold and so we didn't have extra buildings to, you know, just relocate the children to. So it's a process, but we are moving forward and we do want Middle Early College to have their own home, we do. I wish I could snap my fingers and have a place, but unfortunately, you know, that won't work. So we're moving forward on a lot of projects and that's still one that we have to, you know, get some steam going on.
Madam Superintendent, respectfully, I want to say since 2011 I've been on this board and I've heard that over and over and over again. And it was seven years in 2011 that they were waiting for their own campus. Okay, and so at this point, particularly after Madadi Campus is off the market now, which would have been an excellent choice for us to do multiple things on it, but the vision was not there or the lack of vision or the desire to do it, our slush fund, five million dollars, four million dollars, okay, was available. But at this point, the Middle Early College is frustrated. They are upset about how they've been treated and they feel that there is no light at the end of the tunnel for them. And I feel that and when I go into that building, I have nothing that I [inaudible] that. And it's frustrating for me since 2011 to see it and understand it. You got to remember, we were told that School Eight was not even an option for Middle Early College because it was too expensive to rebalance, but it became available for Da Vinci. So I'm not trying to be a downer here, but at the end of the day, to have those kids all together and not be able to grow the Bennett Project and not to do right by Middle Early College is very upsetting to me. This is one of the reasons why it's a need for me to step down from being president of this board and start being the Ferries District Representative in a big way. And it's just not fair to them at this point and I'm not going to back down. We should have a solution, we should have had a solution a long time ago, but it was seven years in 2011. Okay, and so now we're looking at twenty years of how they were treated and it's not fair. Jennifer, you were the one down here blocking us from moving the school to MST when we were going to give them a whole section at MST.
Don't you go there because you know, you know, we were [inaudible].
You know, we were [inaudible].
I was upset with me about that. Because there was no, there was no [inaudible]. I mean, I will say this, I will say this, everybody knows two of my daughters went there and now my son is there. So I have a strong relationship with many of the staff, many of the faculty there and the principal was a principal at Waterfront, so I've known him. And the sentiment, it's real, it's real, there is frustration, it's a consistent, it's just consistent. You know, my daughter moved into three schools in her four-year career at Middle Early College, three different schools, clear across different areas of town and still had to attend a college at that. That's a lot of stress and pressure on the kids. I don't want to belabor this, but I know the opportunity, there was opportunity at DCC, there was opportunity in all these different areas. And when we project the possible opportunity, it gets everybody excited just to be let down. And some of these staff have been there since day one, so they're just kind of tired of going through the wringer. So whatever, you know, I'm not, you know, I get it, I get it. And I'm trying to appease folks too and Sharon being the board member for that school, but me being a proud parent, you know, you got two board members that may not see eye to eye much, but we damn sure on the same page with this.
All right, thank you, everybody. I think we are now transitioning to the next committee, which is Dr. Vice President Kathy Evans-Brown. I'll turn it over to you for our next committee.
Thank you, Board Member Larry Scott, Vice President Larry Scott. Oh, hold on, I lost something. What happened? Okay, there we go. All right, good evening, welcome to the December fourth executive session. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Dr. Kathy Evans-Brown, the representative for East District, but also the Vice President of Executive Affairs. So as we move along this journey of student outcome-focused governance sponsored by the Council of Great City Schools, under our esteemed President Sharon Belton-Cotman, we have adopted the twenty-four, twenty-five goals and they are smart and the guardrails for the district. The superintendent, along with her staff, her team, has executed the process and knowing the superintendent, she's already in the throes of doing the work. So the goals, I just want to remind people what the goals are for the twenty-four, twenty-five year. Goal one, career and college readiness. Goal two, literacy with a focus on third-grade economically disadvantaged students. Goal three, numerancy with a focus on third-grade economically disadvantaged students. And lastly, goal four, numerancy for grade five economically disadvantaged students. We have made great strides in this process of student outcome-focused governance.
We have made great strides in this process of student outcome-focused governance. For example, the superintendent and her team last month, I believe, produced and submitted a progress monitoring calendar to the board in a very timely fashion. And it was very awesome because that will help us and help the district put in systems where when we're not here, that will be there at all times. So that progress monitoring calendar will take us through, you know, the goals, the data, the progress, et cetera, as we move along this journey. Today, I want to discuss the superintendent's 24-25 evaluation. So as you recall, an ad hoc committee was formed that included board members, board members, Terry Schuta and Paulette Woods and myself. We met since which time on probably two or three occasions. The first one, we met with Bob Harts, who is Vice President of the super evaluation that we use for the last two years. The super evaluation is used in many districts with superintendents in New York State, including, you know, Williamville, Kenmore, et cetera. It's a great tool and we all agreed to continue to use it for those years. So when talking with Bob Harts and, you know, with our goals and uploading the goals and guardrails, that's an easy thing that they can do. I also talked with the superintendent about what we have met about, so she's aware as well. So Bob will upload the goals and the guardrails with no problem into the 24-25 evaluated year. Secondly, there was a lot of thought and discussion surrounding other areas that are critical to the superintendent's evaluation to include, A, relationships with the board. And this is, you know, a culmination of our meetings with the ad hoc committee. Community relations, that would include the district image, communication with the community to include all of the quadrants of the city. So for example, the west side, the east side, the south side and the north Buffalo Arena area. And then the other area that last year we thought about as an ad hoc committee was to include business and finance. So that that would include budget and budget development and maintenance facility, all the stuff that Jim Barnes just presented, you know, to us. Because that is critical to the sustainability, you know, of the district along with the superintendent's ability to maintain a budget and not get us bankrupt. So thus, I had a conversation with the superintendent, as I mentioned, surrounding the 24-25 evaluation. And she is in agreement that all of these factors are critical and should be part of her evaluation. It should be weighted. We didn't weight it yet in terms of, of, you know, the, what do you call it? The, it wasn't weighted. And it should be quantifiable. As some of these areas, when evaluating, can can be subjective. So with that, I wanted to at least provide the board with where we are in terms of the conversation. And I want to open it up with the board for discussion. But before that, Dr. Williams, I want to include you with any thoughts or insight that you have on what I just spoke about, because it's your evaluation.
Um, you know. Thank you for earlier reaching out and us having a very candid conversation. And Board Member Woods, thank you also, just, you know, to to secure just some feedback and what my thoughts were on the evaluation. Because I think for a board that one of the most important things that the board is charged with, you know, is hiring a superintendent and evaluating the superintendent and helping to make sure that that superintendent has all of the opportunities possible to be successful. I think that's what the board wants. That's what any superintendent that I've ever spoken to also wants. And so this is, this is a very, very, very important, high stakes piece of a superintendent's work. And so I'm glad to hear that the goals are important. But as you just heard from Chief Barnes, there is a lot that encompasses just like, you know, a principal's work or, you know, an assistant superintendent's work. It's in order to meet those goals, there's a whole lot of things that have to happen from district staff, from communicating with the whole community. And so I hope that, you know, all of those things, I've shared it with both Dr. Evans Brown and with Board Member Woods. I hope that those are things that will be taken into account when looking at the evaluation tool and the weighting of it.
Okay, thank you for that, Dr. Williams. So I'm going to open the floor now from first the ad hoc committee. If you have any additional items that you want to note in addition to what I indicated, and then I'm going to go around and do a poll of everyone else. Okay, Terry, Terry.
I, I think what's really important, and I think that when we had our discussions through the committee, we know that with our new student-focused governance, we're really looking at students' results. And what we we find attractive is that we can still incorporate these other areas that are crucial to the superintendency. And they'll keep in the weighing process, keep perhaps the student, the student goals is really the crux of the evaluation. But we didn't want the other work to go unnoticed. So I think that we had a good discussion. We had some, we had good meetings. And Paulette and I had some pretty heavy debates. But we can, we were able to shake and we're, it was good discussion. And so, so I appreciate the opportunity to serve on this committee.
Thank you, Board Member Schuta. Board Member Woods?
Well, everybody knows me. I'm a legal BGO. We have to stick with what the law says we're responsible for. And I am just happy that though we are focusing on the big picture, the outcomes, and we put that in there, we didn't neglect and exclude what the law says. We going past budget. We, we have to balance that budget. We have to take the vision from the community and report to the community. And we have the board we need to work with and have a relationship with our superintendent. So those three things got in to the evaluation. So I'm a happy camper. It's a fair, balanced evaluation. And as long as the criteria is objective and measurable, not subjective, we can't do any better, guys. We're in good hands.
Hey, thank you, Board Member Woods. All right, so I'm going to go with Vice President Larry Scott. You're on. Unmute Larry.
Sorry about that. Just one more question, Chair Evans Brown. I'm trying to catch up here because the agenda is different than what we're discussing.
So. Let me just, let me just infuse something. What had happened was it originally was going to be what you see about goals. Cindy and Leslie were going to do that. And so when I talked to Dr. Karestis, it changed because Wesley now is out of town and we didn't have an opportunity to change that. So, you know.
Okay, so am I correct in that we have a drafted revision of the superintendent's evaluation? Is that? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, 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 we don't have one. That's why we're discussing it now. We, what we have is the goals that we adopted as the board, right? Those four I just mentioned, along with the guardrail. So those will be uploaded in super eval as part of her devaluation along with other criteria that both Board Member Schuta and Board Member Woods talked about to include relationship with the board, community relations and business and finance. Those are real succinct, similar to what was included last year. And we just eliminated some of the other stuff, but we thought.
All right, but we haven't, that hasn't been shared with us yet, those changes.
No, that's why we're talking about it. Nothing's been solidified. We want to bring it back to the board.
Okay. All right, that's all. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Let's see, Board Member Makusa.
I mean, I don't have any questions. I just, I want to, I'm glad that there is an effort to actually have folks come together on what this means and what it looks like. And I really 100%, you know, give all the props to having the conversation with Dr. Williams Knight. And, you know, that's, as part of the puzzle, I think we were missing because the conversations were happening in silos in the past. But there was an actual committee put together, have the conversation. We're moving forward as a board. This is, it's nine years of now, you know, regardless of the tool, we are going to have an understanding of what this means from her perspective as well as ours. And we're going to come together, do a cohesive evaluation. And I'll be honest, that's kind of far from what we've been doing in the past. So I'm really looking forward to, you know, having this process go down with some real, you know, I'll feel good about it. So thank you all for creating the committee. Thank you, Dr. Williams Knight, for being understanding and working with everybody. This is, this is good stuff.
Thank you, Board Member Makusa. We want this superintendent to be successful. We want to be successful, you know, as a board. And so we're, we're in, we are in this all together. Thank you for your comments. Board Member Heard.
Yes, so, so we're discussing the goals and guardrails for the superintendent today. That's what this is based upon.
Well, okay, so.
I heard what you told Vice President Scott.
Larry Scott, yes.
Yes. Okay, so this, so this is actually will be the ad hoc committee report that you give into the board.
Correct.
For, for what? Because we haven't read any notes or anything like that from the ad hoc report or committee meeting. So this is the first time as a board, I believe, that we all heard of it, what was desired in doing an ad hoc committee. So, so with this, I had, you know, I have a couple of questions. At the last committee meeting, I discussed some of the, some of the things that I've seen that, that were problematic for this district. And I believe that the board need to take a step back and take a look at what the Council of Great City Schools is and what they stand for and what they represent and the influence that they have here in our district. I really believe that there's some huge challenges that's before us. And I know that we made some strides as a district, but I believe that all the strides that we made as a district was due to the superintendent and administrative staff members working and working together. I believe that we have great leadership here in this district. And I would like to sustain that leadership here in this district and, and keep them on the, on the pathway that they're on. But also take a deeper dive into what the Council of Great City Schools are, who they represent, what super PACs possibly that they're affiliated with and people and what's the goals. I believe that this district, you know, is very, very important to all of us. And as a board, we should really, really take a deeper dive into the history of the Council of Great City Schools before we move any forward with it. I hate this warning and I asked before that we can go to council with this or we can go into maybe a workshop to get a better understanding. Because this was what I put before the board. The board agreed to support the Council of Great City Schools, but there was no time to do investigation about the history of the Council of Great City Schools, who's leading it and who's representing us or preparing us. I got calls from, from school board members across this country, you know, said, you know, about allowing a nonprofit to come into our district and represent us and take over our school board meetings. And also, you know, what their goals were and things that they were going to accomplish once again. So we can go deeper into that if you like. But I urge right now for the board just to take a deeper dive, take a step back and see exactly the harsh, the harsh terms that is being used on this district. We know that we are working for student outcomes and we always did that. And we always had a student-focused governance here with this district. And that's why we've been so achieving for student results.
Okay, thank you. Board Member Heard, duly noted. President Sharon Cotman.
So I guess in reference to what Mr. Heard had to say, we had vote for board members to go through the training that I took back during COVID. And I believe each one of them did express that they were better for the wear and that they learned things that they did not learn. Is that not correct? Okay, because our relationship with the Council of Great City Schools has been going on for upwards of over 40 something years. And when we had a situation on this board where we were working to have a board member removed, they were one of the affiliate partners that came to the table with legal force to assist us as well, along with the NAACP, National Association of School Board, New York State School Board Association, the Urban League, excuse me, the NAACP as well. And so one of the reasons why, and oftentimes what happens on this, with this particular board and certain board members, is the message because of the messenger is killed, is destroyed. We had a board that was functioning without having any direction and without having any focus or purpose moving forward. And now we can all be proud of the fact that we have goals, we have time schedules, we have monitoring schedules put in place. Our next steps would probably be to get some, in my opinion, to have a reporting of certain reports that we would like to see. Maybe Paulette Woods, the vacancy report should be a regular one that we take a look at, et cetera. There's quite a few that, you know, we can talk about. But in trying to move this district forward, we could not continue to spend the money we were spending and not put some sort of format in place and get some sort of assistance. As to whether we will, we will accept everything that a consultant brings to us, that has never necessarily been the case. But I think we've done well as a district. The fact that two African-Americans males are running that organization at this point basically are not running, but one is Ray Hart, who has respect. We, I just attended their conference, which was attended upwards of over 4,000 school board members who were in presence, who were there to learn more about that. So the organization is certainly well-respected. And as with anything, you're going to have people that find fault with it and that's the way the world is. So I think we've done a phenomenal job in embracing new ideas. And I'm looking forward to the new leadership for next year and moving things forward so that we can make sure that the money that we're spending is being directed to the needs of the children. And so I just want to commend. And so I just want to commend again the four board members that took the time out of their lives to learn more about being an effective school board member. And I don't think that you're any worse for the wear. If anything, you're more, you're better for it. And I think that's the direction we should be going into. And as we move forward, I'd like to see us continue to grow in that area and, and be smart about, not just about our goals, but about everything that we do. And I think we'll, we'll have great results. Keeping in mind that we have, we're over a billion dollars now in that what we're spending, almost at a billion, almost at $2 billion, if you want to know the truth. We had to do something better than what we were doing for the past, what is it? 80 something years, 90 something years. We had to try something different. And I think this opens, opened a path for us to do additional things. It's called transparency and it's not pretty, and it does take some work. And you guys talked about your, your commitment. And I would never have made a recommendation for, for anyone to attend it if I didn't think that it was worth it. It was a nine-month session and I'm proud of the board members that went through that. Pat yourselves on the back. You did a great job. And so we're moving forward in this district and that's what, that's what we're about. So I'm proud to be a part of this team at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Kotman. And then just to add, you know, the Council of Great City Schools have this framework. Each district, each city, this, you know, is focused on urban areas, right? And so you, as a board have, we as a board have to be smart also. We have to customize, you know, this framework for our district, right? Because these, you know, their consultant, we know this district. This superintendent has been in this, this district for over 35 years. So if anybody know it, it's her. And so if it doesn't work for her and the district, she's going to open her mouth and say that. So I think with any evidence-based project like this school-focused outcome governance, we have to customize it to work for us. And that's why when we, this, this presentation is being presented today about super evaluation and the superintendent's evaluation, it will include the goals, but that's not all that we're gonna evaluate the superintendent on. So, you know, it will include relationships with the board. It will include budget and finance, which are, all of them are critical. And it will include community relationships. Board Member Heard, I see your hand, but I want to also acknowledge board members who have not had an opportunity to speak. And I see Cindy McKetchin is here. Cindy, you're up.
Thank you, Kathy. Can you guys hear me? Okay, yes, okay. I'm sorry. It's been very spotty and I've been in and out of service. But I just wanted to, one, thank the committee for their work in doing this and bringing together, I think, some changes to your point. Dr. Evans Brown, I think that we need to make this our own and we fit, right, this into our, our culture, right, as a district and the way we function. So kudos to you guys for engaging stakeholders and having conversations to open up that dialogue and create that opportunity. And I also just wanted to address the conversation that, you know, was had with regard to the council. I want to just caution, you know, board members and my colleagues from making accusations that you may or may not know to be true, right? The council represents nearly 80 urban districts across the United States. Having attended the conference, separate from what we're doing from the student-focused governance model, there are 80 urban districts that are part of the council's coalition, right? And they really make sure that these districts are as prepared as possible to provide, right, a stellar education to its students. And we're part of, not just the Council of Great City Schools, but we're part of the Big Five. We're part of Cube. We're part of different entities that serve the same purpose. And we are just a member. We're a member of an organization that then allows us to receive some of the perks, right? Which is trainings, education, conferences, things of that nature for both us as board members as well as district personnel. So I want to make sure that that's just raised up and I want to just highlight that there's, we are one of nearly 80 urban districts that are members of the Council of Great City Schools. And I do just want to, you know, uplift that as well. But other than that, I want to say kudos to the team that brought this together today. And before we do close out, I will want to pop on pending I'm Not Lost again and just go over a couple of things for January if possible.
Okay, thank you, Board Member McKetchin. Tom, I mean, Board Member Heard, you're up.
Yes, just a couple of things. Some comments were made that this board didn't have any direction before the Council of Great City Schools. And, and I think that's a very fraudulent remark to say that this board had direction. We had great leadership under President Lupus Kruski and, and presidents before then. And that, and that is really a slap in the face to say that this district and this board didn't have any direction. They worked very hard. And I can go back to COVID to where something happened, you know, to this country. And as a board, you know, we responded very, very well. As a district, we responded very well. And that was, and that was still under the leadership of the previous superintendent. And when Dr. Chanjam Williams Knight took over leadership in this district, it excelled even further, you know, moving forward, you know. And that was direction of making sure every kid, you know, had, had some education, making sure we had instruction at home, making sure that our teachers and the newly invited and solving these, these contracts, you know, here in the district. So this is stuff that was done by this administration. And to say that this board didn't have a purpose, we had a purpose. We had a purpose to educate children. That's all we always did as a board, to educate children and, and, and make this a better community. So our board job is to educate. But as, in this city, as the third poorest city of its size in this country, we did a lot more than education. We, we helped homes, we helped communities. We, we got mental stability and within our communities. Our children are suffering even to this day from, from the effects of COVID. And this, this district is combating that. And that's things that the Council of Great City Schools didn't afford us or teach us. That's something that we knew on our own to do. And, and as in spending money, we spend money very, very, very well in this district. And we have caveat our, our capital projects. And we also have looked towards education for our children, you know, making sure money's good in their directions. And by the chili, we're very well with that the past several years. And just to say that we ain't have no purpose, direction with such great administrators here in this district is really, really a slap in the face. One thing we have to do is go by New York State law. We can't have no outside agency or nonprofit come in and tell us that we can supersede New York State law. And, and that's even far as this thing that we talking about, this, this ad hoc committee. That's New York State law, but the Council of Great City Schools said that we couldn't have. But this council, but this ad hoc committee was handpicked. So it wasn't as if other board members can come in and intervene and it was handpicked. So, and transparency, this district has no transparency, even with cash revealing, which we spoke with in our board meetings about, about transparency. And we put that on our website, that the public can access everything that's going on within the district. Far as our grades, far as absenteeism, far as suspensions, far as long and short-term suspensions, as far as attendance, everything was placed in an app. So we have been very transparent. This is without the Council of Great City Schools. And we was the first, well, only district in New York State to come to, to seclude with the Council of Great City Schools rules by buying and working with them as, as we started doing. And now I understand, I guess we mentioned last board meeting that Rochester is now being involved. And that was influenced by the Buffalo School District. So, I mean, so many different variations here. And, and just know that this district was moving in the very, very equitable means before our relationship with the Council of Great City Schools and before we decided to work with them. And the leadership of Council of Great City Schools can be brought up at another session. That's not for today, but I will, I would love to address the leadership and the knowledge that they have and how they, you know, their past history and record of, of the city schools. And I think our school district is way too important just to have a nonprofit to come in and, and come in and guide us in what we supposed to do. Now, I do not want to see the Buffalo Public School District turn into a charter district. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Heard. Board Member Makusa, you're up.
Okay, I feel like this is something that we need to work on and something that the Council of Great City Schools has really kind of taught us is that we need to have small conversations offline. Right now, as a, somebody who is in the community, if they were to listen to what's happening right now, it's a confusing mess what we're talking about right now. The Council of Great City Schools was brought in to do what no other board has done in the Buffalo School District, which is we have chosen to have ourselves be governed. We recognize that we had some stuff going on. And whether or not the entity that we chose is stellar, top-performing, number one, they are somebody, they are a group that we decided to work with in order to better ourselves. That's the bottom line. Yes, there are, you know, you can't deny that people talk and there are rumors and whatever. But as one of the people who have taken the course, there's a difference between the actual course that you take with the Board of Education and then the individual track. And I have grown from the individual track in ways that I couldn't even imagine. And I am a trainer. I am a trainer in, in the business and social justice trainings. But I do want to point out two things before we should move on from this conversation. And we should, if I, Dr. Evans Brown, I would suggest that we have maybe a conversation or maybe a call or something amongst us board members offline, if not public, so that we can really digest and understand what we're doing as a group before we take it to the public. Because I'm confused and I'm getting crazy texts about how confused everybody else is. Bottom line, this Board of Education has decided to better themselves. That is the truth. That is straight up, regardless of what you see or may hear. This is what we decided to do and these are the people we decided to do it with. And some of us took an extra track. It doesn't make us any better or any worse. That just means that we were hungry to do better. After nine years, I wanted to understand more. And Rochester was doing this well before us, well before us. So this is, we are coming in kind of late. All the other districts that have been doing this, they have been, we're learning from them. They're not learning from us. We didn't influence anybody's decision. We're learning from other districts as well. So I just want to say, everybody's got an opinion or whatever, but here is where we are now. And we have invested too much time, too much money, too much effort. And we have brought this community together in ways that has never been done before. We need to start looking at this in the positive light that it is and will continue to be. We just started this. This isn't something that we're 15 years in and we haven't seen any results. I feel I've been able to produce better just as an individual based on this training. So there, there's issues that I see, but that doesn't mean, as, as far as Dr. Evans Brown has said, let's just be real about the fact that we can take in a training, we can do what we want with it. And we have, we have altered. Poor Leslie has gone back and forth with us on how we would like to see Buffalo represented. We are unique. We do our own thing. And she has definitely heard that we are no cookie cutter district.
That's right.
Individuals in these other trainings have heard, we stand our ground. So I need the public to know, this is an effort that never took forth before. We are, you know, nobody's perfect. You took people from all different districts, all different walks of life, and you put them together in a space where we're dealing with a billion-dollar budget a year. We needed some help. So let's start focusing on how we're doing what we need to do. And if anybody wants to help, come on board, see what we're doing. There's presentations coming up about what we're, what we've been doing, how the Council of Great City Schools have been working with us. Those are coming up in the near future. Look at the website. I'll be presenting one on December 14th. Other board members will be presenting as well. Let, let's just, let's just take this into another direction. We had, we were on time. We were doing great. Let's, let's cut the negativity and let's just move forward.
Thank you, Board Member Makusa. And I really appreciate, you know, that, that conversation. And, you know, I've been on the board for five years and I don't remember anyone going out to the community to listen to what the community wants, what children are able to do. They have been supportive of this process. Every time when we did a listening tour, people were interested in what the board was doing. We got surveys completed. They were aggregated into why we're here. This is how we develop our goals. And prior to that, our superintendent went out to the community. That has never happened. So if you look at the strides that we have made, we're trying to put systems in place that will be here beyond our tenure on this board. And so I'm gonna be proud about that, to hang my hat on to something that will, will work, be sustainable. It's almost like a roadmap, right? A blueprint, if you will, that this board will function without you, without me, and without you. So thank you for that. I thought I saw Board Member Shooter's hand up.
Yes, I just want to clarify something. By no means was this ad hoc committee handpicked. You had offered it to anyone and no one said they would do it. And then twice you asked, we were not handpicked. I'm already on the implementation team. I stepped back because I thought someone else might want the opportunity to be part of this and no one volunteered. So we needed someone to go in and talk, so I personally was not handpicked. I think I was taken by default, but I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
You were.
I also volunteered. Everybody was asked and management issues are important to me. So I volunteered.
Yeah, so thank you for that clarity. Yeah, yeah, we weren't, they weren't handpicked. I, I volunteered. I, I asked for any of the board members to be on this ad hoc committee on two executive, executive committee meetings. So just go back to tape and review it. All right, any other comments from board members so we can wrap this up? And as a, as a, the ad hoc committee, we will take all of what we talked about today, meet again. And some of you want stuff in writing. We can do that. I don't have a problem with it. But we have to get to a point that we agree to disagree. Okay? Cindy, did you have anything else that you wanted to note? All right, go ahead.
I did. Thank you. I just wanted to, and I'll be following up with an email, so everybody will get this. But we're hoping that January 17th, time not secured yet, it is a Friday, that we may be willing to go into a half-day retreat. Leslie would be coming up as we are welcoming two new board members to the table. And it could serve as a refresh for the current board members and kind of a mini onboard for the two new board members. But is to do a, a small work session or training retreat. I have to come up with the right word, apologies, with our new, our new board going into the 25-year. Leslie is hoping to be able to arrange it. And she did ask us to consider a Friday only because, contrary to popular belief, she does not work for the Council of Great City Schools exclusively. She does have another job and so she does have to ask for time off in order to come. So we're really striving for a Friday if possible for that reason. And it would be an afternoon, a few hours, that board members would come together. So I wanted to throw that out there now. I will follow up with an email likely tomorrow to everybody, just giving y'all a, you know, a heads up and an opportunity to respond to the email if possible. But kind of get our marching orders for 2025, if you will. But thank you again, Kathy, and, you know, everybody for your thoughts tonight.
Thank you, Board Member McKetchin. We'll look forward to that email. All right, any last-minute thoughts, concerns? Because that's all I have at this moment, Dr. Williams Knight.
No, it looks like people are gonna get some time back. So that is good. I hear that the weather tonight is gonna get kind of nasty. So, you know, I'll be working with David into the late hours of the night to see what that looks like. But, you know, mostly I'm just glad to hear that, you know, there will be other things, important things that are taken into account. important things that are taken into account when looking at, um, you know, an evaluation of the superintendent. One thing to keep in mind is that, uh, the board selected for goals, um, New York State assessments, and normally the evaluation process happens over the summer. But because those scores will not be back, and I'm not sure if anything needs to be approved or documented for the board to know that it's likely that the evaluation wouldn't take place for next year until sometime into the fall, maybe winter, for 24, 25.
Superintendent, I think that was something Leslie had brought up. Sorry, Dr. Evans Brown. Um, she did address that with us and told us to make sure that we're keeping that at the forefront of our minds, that, that is further conversation that we need to, you know, we need to have. So thank you for raising that.
Yep, absolutely. Yep, thank you. Okay, with, with, with nothing else being said, this will conclude the Executive Affairs Committee. See you next time. Have a good night.
Stay safe.
Be blessed, everyone.
All right, Cindy, be safe out there.
Be blessed, stay blessed.